Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Dr. Reese, will you take attendance, please?
President DeAlessandro.
Here.
Vice President Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Reese, here. Treasurer Hanser.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Summers.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any, no changes to the board agenda? Pre-arranged requests to address the board, do we have any that were submitted? Okay. There was a consent agenda, um, which has the meeting minutes from February 14th. Is there a motion, please? Mary?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Support Dr. Reese? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item five, superintendent report.
I have no report tonight.
Tell you what, I might get to my 13-minute mark here. Board of Education matters. We have the item A, the superintendent's extension contract. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Reese?
Move to approve the superintendent contract between the Board of Education and Dr. Vicky Markovich for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Is there support? Support Amanda? Discussion? Yes.
Um, okay. So, um, so I had some conversations with John from MLI, who was our recruiting person, the Michigan Leadership Institute, that's who we've used the last couple of times. They're a recruiting program for superintendent and higher level, like educational type of positions all over the state of Michigan. So, we had had some conversations about starting the recruiting process and what that was going to look like. Obviously, we have an interim that, in the very short time, has really moved things along, has a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience. And so, we started talking about what we really wanted for our district, myself and John, and, um, and I said, "I think that we're all just looking for some stability. I think we're looking for stability for our staff. I think, you know, going on our fourth, fifth superintendent in six months is never good." And so, we talked a lot about the concerns that the entire board had for creating that stability for our staff, which of course then trickles down to our stability of our students and our schools. So, we really started that conversation and I said, you know, um, "Maybe I need to go back to Vicky and have a, have a, a more..." Would you help, would you really consider it? Because we had kind of talked a little bit here and there in some conversations. So, I reached back out to Vicky. She said, "Let me talk to the boss." That's Stan, her husband, which she did. And she came back and said, "I would consider staying on. I would consider extending it for, for a one-year contract in addition to the committed time already." Her committed time is to June 30th, 2023. So, she offered to do a year extension on top of that, which would take us into 2024, June 30th of 2024. That would give, I think, some stability to our staff. It would get us through, um, we're expecting our third-party review report, hopefully to come out in the spring. They've kind of, you know, promised us again that they're going to be releasing something in the spring, so we're, we're going to hold them to that, hopefully, and get that out. In addition, we've got three new board members that have never done a superintendent search, and that, it's a very extensive process. So, this gives them a little bit more time to understand what their role is and what the role of a superintendent is as well. It's hard to recruit for a position that you haven't worked with before. So, um, this gives them an opportunity to get their feet wet and understand what, what a role of a superintendent really is before they can start putting the guidelines out there to look for one. I was, I, I'm also not interested in, in getting the bottom of the barrel. We need to get the best. The next superintendent, you know, hopefully will be a longer-term situation, and we want and we deserve the best. And I'm not going to settle, and I don't want to put us in a position to do so. And so, those are the criteria, those are the ingredients of what led us to this position. So, here we are. So, I reached out to Bill Blaha, our lawyer. He started drafting the contract. I sent it to Vicky's lawyer, and that's kind of how it started. So, now it's here in a public forum for us to discuss. And, and that's the process that got us here today.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay, I will just add my, um, when, when Heather talked with, um, MLI and came back and said, you know, it's going to be, it probably is going to be a situation where you're going to have superintendents shying away from this particular opportunity right now. As Heather and I discussed, um, building that stability, it was really, really important, as Heather said, that we have the stability, but we have to look forward in this position. We have to look forward when we look for our next superintendent. And that's not to say the ink's not even dry on this one, but we need to look for, we have to have a firm foundation in this district so that it is attractive to a number of different candidates, not just a couple that, "Oh, well, I'll give Oxford a try." We don't want to be in a position where somebody's trying us out. We want to get back to where we were. We want to be that, that beacon that we were before. And, and I'm confident that we can stabilize with Vicky and, and then, as Heather said, give everybody on this board the opportunity to kind of look at what they're looking for, because it, it was new. I mean, you all are just, what, four or five months in? And now, to make this, this type of a decision is, is a difficult and daunting one. So, I'm, I'm very happy with the fact that we're able to keep Vicky for another year. So, and thank you, and please thank Stan for him wanting to stay in Oxford as well, because it...
I do have some dues to pay on that.
Yeah.
And spending a little bit of time with Vicky, um, it, it, it's not just a, well, let me check with Stan. It's, it's not just, it is a very much of a team that they have, her and her husband and her family. It's a team process. So, um, I'm, again, grateful to both you and Stan and your family, so thank you. All right, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. It's a privilege.
We'll sign this afterwards.
Okay.
All right. Item B, Oakland, Oakland County School Board Association Proposed Resolutions and Changes for Approval. Want to make a motion?
I would love to make the motion.
Thank you.
Move to approve all proposed amendments to the OCSBA bylaws as presented.
Okay, is there support? Support Dr. Reese? Discussion? No? We good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I can do the next one, too?
Please.
Move to approve the proposed new and amended resolutions as presented. That should say OCSBA resolutions. So, before I finish that motion, I'm going to walk you back.
Yes, please.
Move to approve the proposed new and amended OCSBA resolutions as presented.
Is there support? Support Dr. Reese?
Okay.
Discussions?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, second reading of policy updates. So, we have, two, two, three, four, five, on our second readings. Do you want to read those?
Unless Amanda would like to.
Amanda, would you like to read them?
Okay. Move to approve the second reading of policy numbers 0144.1, compensation; 0166, agenda; 0167.3, public comment at board meetings; 5350, student suicide; 5517.01, bullying and other aggressive behavior towards students.
Is there support? Support Heather? Discussion?
I think the only thing we were coming back with were a couple edits, which I see were done in terms of the pronoun question. There was the Neola question in the student, student suicide, which we got clarification correct from the attorneys that that doesn't pose any legal. And then, the other one, I believe we had questions on, was the age limitation for the bullying policy.
Correct.
Yeah, restorative justice, accepting.
Okay. And all those were fixed.
Those were all clear, clarified by legal?
Great. No other questions?
Any further discussion?
I would just add that this is, oh, go ahead, Reese, did you want to speak? That this is the second reading, so if folks have comments, we've received some comments. If board members have comments and want to talk about that now, want to share their thoughts with the policy committee members, they can do that. This is a second reading, so it's still up for discussion. We're not voting on the final tonight.
Correct.
Well, we do have a recommendation. If you want to vote on the final ones, that would be... We are in the discussion of...
Yeah, that, that, this is the discussion.
Right, right. This is for the second reading. This is a second reading, not a motion to, it wasn't a motion to approve. We're just entering it as the second reading.
Correct.
Typically, only do two readings, and then we send it off to Neola.
Okay, I didn't see that on here, so I thought it was another reading. I could be...
No. My memory serves me, it's always the first reading, the second reading. The second reading is voted on approved and passed.
Okay, so then, then we should add a motion if everybody is ready. I mean, we're still at discussion. So, were there any other points for discussion? Thank you, Erin, for reporting back out on those.
So, I know that Erin reported back on that stuff, and we were in a discussion or talking about it, but do we have the final draft of what that, with those stuff in there?
Just the red line.
Okay, all right, all right, good. Okay.
And those are also posted, right, Angela? Okay, so those were, and those are, those were available?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't mean to take the meeting over from you, Dan.
No, that's okay. I am fine. That's why you guys are on policy. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Now, do we need a whole nother motion to approve them, or the second reading is the approval?
That is the approval.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm still learning, too. Thanks.
All right, item seven, curriculum and instruction, OVA curriculum approval. We had the presentation last week, um...
It was a great presentation.
Yes. Does anybody want to make the motion that is on item seven?
Can you read it?
Oh, Mike.
Yeah, let Mike do it.
Move to approve the Blackbird ELA curriculum and the NOEO charter science curriculum for OVA students for the 2023-2024 school year.
Is there support? Support James? Any discussion? Mary?
I would just make a comment. Thank you again to OVA for such a great presentation at the last meeting. It was very informative, and I really appreciated all the data, and thank you for that.
I will say that it is great to see the offerings that we continue to bring forward, not just to our seated, but obviously to our OVA students. I think we need to remind everybody just how important and how far OVA has come in its now 11th year. We need to make sure that we're providing as much opportunities as we can for the way that the, for the way that, um, our society's changing, maybe a little bit more transient in jobs and whatnot, and people still want to keep their kids here, and they still have the option of doing it virtually. So, that is, it's a big plus for us. Any further thoughts, ideas, discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item B, special education course addition. Pam?
All right, good evening. We have two new special education courses for the high school. And so, Pam Beal, our executive director of special ed, is going to kind of go through that process as we are seeking approval to add these to the course offerings at the high school.
Good evening. I am so excited to be here presenting these to you. We've worked really hard on these and, um, something I'm very passionate about. So, I'm going to refer to my notes, because I wanted to make sure that I got everything down that I wanted you guys to hear tonight. So, I'm here to propose three new special education courses be added to the course catalog for Oxford High School for next fall. All of these courses would be taught by a special education teacher, also certified in the content area. The class size of the, the course would be low, probably a max of 12 students to one teacher. It currently fits with our special education staffing, so there are no additional staffing needs. And although it's, it, these would be for a smaller number of our students, it really aligns with our philosophy of every child, every day, and making sure that we're providing all of our students the opportunity to build skills and earn a high school diploma. So, I wanted to start with our ELA skills class. This would be a special education intervention class focused on building skills, both in reading, reading comprehension, and written expression. So, currently, right now, we have ELA 9, 10, 11, 12, and that's our path for all of our students. For students with special education, they could be in a co-taught English Language Arts class, which is a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher in the room with the same number of, of students in any other general education class, so up to 27, 27 to 30. So, while inclusion is important, what we're finding is that a lot of our students, due to their disability, due to lost learning with COVID, and due to the shooting, their reading levels, they're, they're multiple grade levels behind in reading. So, reading comprehension, and again, that writing. So, it really makes it difficult for them to engage in that gen ed curriculum or that gen ed text, because it's above their grade level for reading. So, there's a shift in focus in getting credit versus when do we stop teaching the skill? So, do we stop teaching reading because you're in high school now and we're focused on credit? Or how can we get you credit while still teaching you to read and getting you up to where you need to be? So, that's what this class would do. In your board packet, I included a little write-up about our language live curriculum or language live intervention. We've been piloting it at the high school in some of our study skills class, and the middle school uses it as well in their intervention classes. So, there's several different focuses of that. There's a tech, a word training, which is going back to basics of learning how to read, decoding and fluency skills. And then, there's a text training, which is to help students with reading comprehension, grammar usage, and some of those different writing strategies. Each unit has a, a passage, a written passage, that students then are taught step-by-step instructions on how to write about what they read, interpret what they read, and make opinions about what they read. So, really, that's mimicking what's happening in their gen ed ELA courses, but it's at their grade level. It's at their reading level, so they really can engage in meaningful feedback with their writing. This will help us in terms of monitoring their ability levels and helping us to find where the learning gaps are. Is it a fluency issue? Do we need to focus or hone in on that? Is it a comprehension issue? Do we need to hone in and focus on that? So, so that's really for our ELA. I wanted to mention that this class would be typically taken at the same time as that general education ELA class. So, for example, a student might have co-taught ELA 9 for the inclusion, and then also have this ELA skills class to help build the skill. There will be some cases, although rare, but there are some student situations where the, the gen ed ELA course is, is way too challenging, and the repeated failure starts to, to damage our student's self-esteem. And so, we just find ourselves being dug into a deeper and deeper hole. So, through the personal curriculum process, we will be able to write a PC for some of our students to substitute this ELA skills class as their language arts class, as long as it aligns with their post-secondary goals. So, a lot of our students that are two-year university-bound, community college-bound, trade school-bound, we can do those PCs and say that this ELA skills class, we're working on improving your reading ability, your real-life writing skills, so that you can be successful post-secondary. So, that's the ELA skills.
Can I ask a quick question about that, Pam? But, so are you saying that they would have to take both?
Correct.
For like, at least one year to like, prove or evaluate that they would need to get...
Yep, we would be collecting data. Yes, we'd be collecting data.
Because some kids, what would be the point in having an ELA grade-level class and then this skills-level class if they're never going to be able to do that work?
And that evaluation and process takes place prior to that freshman year. So, we have a good understanding of, even if it's 12 or 14 kids, where this might best sit for them.
Okay.
Really, there would be, within the language live program, there is entrance and exit criteria. So, once they're scoring consistently as mastery in a lot of those lessons in the intervention course, we know that they're ready to exit.
Okay.
Hey, Pam, is this available to gen ed too, or just special ed kids?
It would just be for students with IEPs. I just wanted to talk about math. We really did a deep dive into math specifically with our students with IEPs. I kind of wanted to show you the general sequence of currently the traditional model of, of a math sequence at the high school and how this fits into our students with IEPs. So, ninth grade is algebra, algebra 1, 10th grade geometry, 11th grade, they were, they did split algebra 2 into algebra 2A and algebra 2B. Or, we could talk about a PC to swap in a senior math elective. What, what we were finding, or what I had noticed, is that if we're taking algebra 1 ninth grade and we are unsuccessful and don't earn credit, we're moving into geometry, and we also have to make up algebra 1 through credit recovery. So, again, it's that we're, they're getting dug into a deeper and deeper hole. So, we kind of wanted to back, back up and say, "In order to be successful in algebra 1, what do some of our students need?" So, that's where we came up with, I want to shout out some people, because I was in a room recently, had the privilege to be in a room with some of our, some of the most brilliant mathematical minds we have in this district. So, Andrew Shacketano, Lauren Kerner, Matt Call, Carleen Allen, Trevor Potts, and Rita Van Steveren. The energy in this room was great. And we were talking about, "How do we create more pathways for our students with disabilities? So, it's not just that traditional track where they might fail, they might not get credit, and then they have to make it up, or they're, they're passing with a D, and what skills did they really take out of that? Or was it more just like, phew, I got the credit for it?" So, we really wanted to, to shift focus and see what, what do we need? And we came up with pre, a pre-algebra course, a special education pre-algebra course called Applied Algebra. So, this course would really focus on the mastery of some of those key foundational algebra skills. We, we would be using the Big Ideas Math Curriculum, which we already have. But during this meeting, the team did a deep dive into the ninth-grade algebra standards and pulled out some of the key skills that students need prior to taking that algebra 1, so that we can really focus, hone in, and develop some really great comprehension in those skills. So, from there, the students, or the, the people in the room, we started to build units. And Rita Van Steveren was so great, she just sat there, and as she listened, she was asking us questions, and she had her IB hat on. So, she was there as we built the units, she was aligning them to IB as we were going. So, she would be asking terms about inquiry, or she would be talking about formative and summative assessment, and she's just plugging it in as we go, approaches to her learning. So, we really were able to already build some of these units for this class. We then did the same thing for consumer math, again, another special education class, but focused on daily adult math skills. So, we looked at the K-12 standards for economics with the element of personal finance. And from there, we identified some key concepts that, how can we give our students real-life math skills for, to be successful, successful once they leave us? So, this course is focused on your income, income taxes, financial planning, banking, credit savings, investments, insurance, housing, renting, and recreational planning of finances. So, I wanted to show you something that I'm really excited about. This would not be in the course catalog. Because we don't want to create confusion about what's offered to everybody. However, this would be used at students' IEPs as they enter high school to talk about different math trajectories that they can take. So, I also found that only a small number of our students, our students with IEPs are attending OTEC right now. And so, this, having this course of study at that initial move-up IEP into the high school would sort of put it on parents' radar, and it would allow us to have intentional conversations about what a student's course of study looks like for the next four years. So, in that ninth-grade meeting, we could be talking about OTEC, so that when it's time to start touring OTEC, the families are already aware that that was on the table. I do have a caveat here, and I just was going to reiterate, I mentioned earlier, but through the personal curriculum process, and I can explain that further to anyone, but for students with IEPs, we can make adjustments to the MMC requirements for a high school diploma, as long as it, one, aligns with their EDP, and, two, helps them to become viable applicants for their post-secondary goals. So, we're always talking about, "What are we doing after high school? And do you need algebra 2, or would consumer math be more appropriate? And if it is, we're going to write a PC, a personal curriculum, for your consumer math to take the place of your algebra 2, based on your, your disability and your post-secondary goals." So, as you can see here, we, we've just expanded our options. By, by adding that pre-algebra class in the beginning, we now can have students have better success their sophomore year in algebra 1, and from there, go to OTEC, take that consumer math, maybe go to OTEC in senior year. We also have general internship, which we really want to talk about building, and students who already are employed, how can we count that as a math credit? Assign a special education teacher to, to their general internship, going into their place of work, talking about different math skills that they're using, whether in retail or in restaurants. So, I'm really excited about this work. There's a lot of people who are also really excited about this work. Overall, these courses are a step in the direct, direction of shifting focus from just earning credits, getting you to graduation, and really teaching you the skills you need to, that align to what you're going to do after graduation. So, I believe that our next meeting, we would be asking you to vote on adding these courses to the course catalog, so that we can start planning for our students for next, for the fall. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, Pam, do you think this will keep kids in the high school diploma track and not a certificate of completion?
That is the goal.
Okay. Do you know about how many you think, if you were to guess, how many? Do you know about how many you think, if you were to guess, how many are directed that way, that this could provide the intervention needed?
I would say about a dozen per grade.
A dozen per grade?
Mm-hmm. We get to a point where we're credit deficient and our option is certificate of completion to put you in a CI classroom. So, this is just expanding our options to get students' high school diplomas and making sure we set them up for the next step, not just your diploma, but what are you doing next?
Anyone else? I have a couple of questions. So, if this is approved, board approved, and say, if students midway through, while they would be through their, say, sophomore year, or even freshman year, would there be, would there be a need for a change in their IEP as it is written today with these changes?
Yes, we would be adding, if they don't have, so if they're in a Gen Ed math class and we switch them to a special ed consumer math class, that would increase their special ed minutes on IEPs, yes.
Okay. So, that could be done, that could be streamlined in their next, their move-up meeting?
Mm-hmm.
From, say, to allow it?
Their IEP team, yeah, yeah. Would make that decision along with the student and the family.
Okay. And, speaking of the family, wouldn't that addition of the consumer math be a conversation starter for vocational school, or trade school, or something like that, as opposed to focusing in on just college, 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 college? I mean, that's, I'm talking about real-life experience here, because that was never on our radar until senior year. And, one year at college, decided it wasn't for him, went into the workforce and is doing great. But if the conversations happened earlier, I think it would help the student understand that this is not the only path, there's a lot of different paths. So, I think that's a, that's a great opportunity for us to have that.
Yeah, so it's about intentional planning and letting families know ahead of time the options that are available. So, I think we can do a better job of marketing some of the O-Tech or career-focused opportunities for our students with disabilities. I think by the time we tell them about it, it's too, we haven't planned for that. And so, they haven't built the skills pot that they might need to go into something like machinery. So, if we're having that conversation in 9th grade with some sort of trajectory like this, we're going to spend 9th and 10th grade really focusing in on the skills you need for what could come for 11th and 12th grade. Yeah.
James?
So, adding the additional class and changing, having a co-taught, plus the other stuff, what does that look for staffing? Are we pulling special education staff out of that co-taught class? Are we pulling resources from students that could use it from there to supplement over here? I guess I don't want to rob Peter to pay for Paul and stuff, like, what does that look like?
So, we currently have enough special education teachers at the high school to run these classes without pulling any supports. So, we have study skill classes right now. Essentially, that's our, that is our only special education course at the high school, is a study skills class, which is, it's important, it's focused on executive functioning skills, but not necessarily a targeted and research-based approach to learning to read and learning to write. So, those classes right now are very low numbers. And we're talking about three to four students sometimes with one teacher. So, what, the cost would be, maybe there would be eight to 12 students in a study skills class, so that we can open up a section of this versus four to six, which we have now.
Okay.
I think what we may find is that you'll have Gen Ed kids' parents saying, can my student be in consumer math? I mean, I'm just going to tell you that I think this is something that we should look at as a board to say, this is probably something that every student should take at some point in their educational process. When you talk about learning what taxes are, who's this FICA guy that's taking money from me every week that I get paid? Those are things that I think every student should know before they get into the real world. And even if that world, real world is college, they're going to learn even more when they get there. They'll be a step ahead of most.
So, that was, that was something that we did discuss, Dan. I think when we were talking about planning for next year, we really wanted to move the special education courses ahead, but also, how can we maybe be leading the pack in that sense?
Very good.
All right, so, Dan. And actually, I think that the governor just signed some legislation on adding personal finance to the high school graduation credits coming up in, I don't know, 2026?
Would it be the Michigan High School credits, or would it be the Michigan High School requirements?
Well, it would be a requirement like government, is a requirement now.
So, it would be a requirement?
Required standards, a few ways in which we can embed that into either an existing curriculum like financial management and/or other courses like economics. We'll be coming to the board at some point here soon to figure out the way in which we're going to cover those standards for all students that get to the graduation.
So, we will be, we will be offering, you know, something similar. I wanted to know if you had a camera in the room when all these brilliant minds were together and?
That's a question.
I just, I got excited listening to you just talking about the way that we come together and how well we work in groups. It's just really exciting to see that energy focused on the students and how can, how can we offer more? How can we, how can we be better? So, thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. All right, wait. Do you want to go?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Just checking.
It's time to go. Katie Hill.
I'm going to start by taking a trip back to the beginning of the school year in 2021. My son, who has a progressive and incurable lung disease, was eager to return to in-person learning after a year of virtual school that was a disaster for both him and I. However, he would not be able to return in person for the 21-22 school year. A small number of individuals formed a group on Facebook called Unmask Our Kids Oxford. Our newly-elected board members all played a very active role in this group. Shortly after the group's creation, some members scheduled a protest at Oakland County Health Department and filed a lawsuit against the district for complying with the mask mandate. In response, the district made the reckless decision to not follow the mask mandate the first week of school. Due to the district's willingness to bend to extremist conspiracy theories on masks, I could not trust that the district would consistently follow masking mandates, and my son had to continue with OVA. He couldn't even get school pictures that year because they were held the first week of school and OVA would not accommodate his needs for others to be masked so he could go and safely get his school photos and ID. Individual, the individuals who filed the lawsuits and pressured the board to not follow the mandate were fighting to keep my child and others like him from their right to safely attend public school in the least restrictive environment. They wanted to make school a dangerous place for him and deny him the right to attend altogether, or deny him the right to attend altogether. Now, back to our current state and why this information is relevant. The district recently contracted a new security firm. One of the individuals hired by that firm to work inside the school buildings, Kristen Carr, is the founder of the Unmasked Oxford Group, the treasurer of Michigan Freedom Defenders, which protested with armed individuals and groups at our state Capitol over masking, and filed a lawsuit against the district for its simply complying with the Health Department mandates. It is ironic that she was hired to keep our students safe when she has and is an absolute danger to my son. My son still continues to wear a mask at school by choice, and now I have the added concern of worrying whether he will be discriminated against by our security personnel, or if they would even choose to protect him during an emergency due to her bias. I'm very concerned that Fortis also did not do a thorough job of checking her background since she has such an open hatred towards students with medically complex issues. It is also worth noting that Carr donated money to a political action committee called Focus on Oxford, which helped to elect our newly-elected board members, and now she finds herself with unemployment in our district. Thank you.
I'm back, and I just wanted to thank the district tonight and the dedicated staff who are supporting and teaching our social-emotional learning curriculum. Our children and our teenagers do not come to school as empty vessels to be filled with facts and abstract learning to spit back on standardized tests. They come as whole, complex human beings. They have physical, social, emotional, and intellectual capabilities, as diverse as they are. Learning does not take place in a vacuum. Learning depends on all those other abilities that are within the child. And when a child sits with a group and discusses how they manage and how they become aware of their own feelings, it's different than, if you think your child has, is comfortable with feelings and emotions at home, that's fine. But, in a larger group, like a classroom, or a work situation, an individual must not only be aware and able to manage their own emotions and social ability, but they need to be able to understand and empathize with the others in the larger community. I think unless a child intends to be a hermit, or continue to live in their family home for the rest of their lives, they will be at a disadvantage if they don't know how to behave in a larger community, such as classroom or workspace. And I think that the social-emotional learning is of utmost importance, and I will continue to speak on behalf of that curriculum as long as I need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Crozek.
Good evening. It's been a minute since I've been here. So, two things I want to raise, it's been 455 days since November 30th, and we lost four amazing lives. 455 days. And we're still waiting for this independent review. Heather mentioned tonight that we might get it this spring. So, I thought I would remind all of us here that this community, the victims, their families, this community, the staff, the students, we all deserve an independent review, and the contract in place does not serve that. Varnum was hired by the board. Varnum then hired GuidePost. Attorney-client privilege exists. For all we know, a report has already been created and delivered. There's nothing, no statement of work, no commitment to the community to deliver anything. There is nothing contractually making this independent. So, in all the discussions and consulting with attorneys, I think as a community, as a taxpayer, victims' families deserve that. That contract needs to be revisited, and you need to build confidence that there's actually going to be an independent review, because saying it's coming in the spring means nothing. The second topic, very quickly, is bullying. I think you all know that the bullying has been escalating in the community. Parents are talking about it on social media, friends, families, staff members, students, it's escalating. I can't help but feel like I did in November of 2021. The district needs a timeout. We need a timeout, we need to get back to the basics. There are students fearful to come to school, they are fearing their safety. We have parents that are fearful for their children, we've got parents that are dismissing the behaviors. We have staff members afraid to go in the hallways during change time because of the bullying, because of the harassment, because of the threats, because of the violent behaviors that are occurring. The community's talking about it. I appreciate the work that's been done on the policy review, that's great, but now we need to enforce it. We have to set the example, we have to hold teachers accountable, students accountable, parents accountable, the district accountable. It's the only way that it will change. We can't hide the fact that the bullying is out of control right now in the district. We have to address it. Face, face it, right? We have to hold our students, our families, and our staff to the code, and hold, hold the kids accountable to behaving in that way. We have to stop hiding it. We have kids that are afraid, they're afraid to report it, and then it's creating more, more violence, and it's churning, and churning, and churning. So, my ask to you is, it's a call to action, it's time, we need a timeout, we need an assembly, parent assembly, student assembly, staff assembly, something, a reminder to be good humans. And kids need to feel safe coming to school. Thank you.
We have a list of scheduled activities on the agenda. Is there any administrative clarification? None? Final board comments. Dr. Reese?
So, last time I reported on the national advocacy work that Mary and I went and did, and that there would be a local advocacy day, and this is for the other board members, should they want to go, tentatively, it will be April 20th in Lansing. There's a lot more details to come. We're hoping to have the governor come and then also work with our legislators here from Oxford to talk about the school budgets that have been proposed, so we can try to keep as much of that money intact in the budget as possible, because Oxford certainly would benefit from it, and so would all the larger communities around us.
I would just like to request that for our next meeting on March 14th, that we ask GuidePost to come here and give another presentation to the community. I think it's been too long since we've heard from them, and we're just as in the dark as the community, and I would really appreciate an update if they could come and do that on the March 14th meeting, please.
I thought she was asking, you, you mean, have them come here to a public meeting?
Yes.
Not, okay.
Mm-hmm. And then if Varnum wants to meet in closed session.
I'll, I'll say something when we go through the whole thing, just to kind of... Mary?
Thank you. Thanks for that reminder, Erin. I think there was something in the email, I think an email went out about the day at the Capitol.
Yeah, there's also a day on March 22nd back in Washington, but we won't be in attendance to that one.
I don't think I can, I don't think I can make it work. I just did want to remind all board members also that you probably received an email from OCSBA about some upcoming CBA classes that will be held in Waterford. So, the online classes have been great, I really like the in-person classes, because it's good to be able to converse with other school board members from around the county. So, there's a number of classes available, many of which are at no charge to the district, we can get reimbursed because of, to money.
For the same concern that I think a number of people have had of that, you have Varnum, then you have GuidePost, what's those conversations look like when we're talking about the interview The interview process of what does the safety and security of our buildings look like now? Those two parties are in the room together. It was my request, any conversation that happens about the days leading up to the 30th, it'd just be GuidePost. I heard that loud and clear from a number of people, from several different board members, from several different community members, that it was important, and that has been upheld by them.
Unless the person requests...
Yes.
Their own legal support, which in some cases, I think they...
If the person interviewing, if the person interviewing requests to have an attorney present of their selection, that's that person's right.
Right.
It's their legal right to have representation. Even though this is an illegal proceeding, it is one that they have the right to have an attorney present for. So I just wanted to make that known to the community. So if I get any more clarification, I will bring it up at the next meeting, but that was something that I heard loud and clear, we all heard loud and clear from the community, and I heard from my fellow board members, so I wanted to just bring that up.
I would support Amanda's notion to have them come and speak.
Absolutely. And they have given us, they have given me the, anytime that we want them here, they will be here. So I will ask them to be here at our next meeting. Okay?
And every subsequent until we have a report, and if we can ask them any time, it's well kept, too. So if they come to every meeting, what would you, would you want to say, in the last two weeks, I interviewed two more people? Or, I mean, like, maybe you should have a guideline.
Maybe let us know why this is taking so long, what their...
I can tell you why it's taking so long.
Well, they did the last time.
Because there's been a lot of people that were unavailable, weren't going to speak until the legal proceedings happened, and we've moved that ball forward substantially.
Right, that's what I heard in the last couple of months. So do we know how close they are? Do we know...
I don't know that.
Do we know any?
I don't know that.
So, yeah, I'd like to hear.
So, but, I mean, if we're going to ask them to be here for every meeting, you know, they're going to be traveling from DC, they're going to be traveling here for every meeting, so we have to be mindful of that as well. So maybe if we can ask them to be here every other meeting...
Maybe if we can find a middle ground, give them that sense of urgency that...
They have a sense of urgency, believe me. I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm sure there's people out there that are anxious, and as they should be, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything? All right. Meeting is adjourned.[1730.61]